Mr. Bill Stevens, he is my chaplain for the FOP Lodge 43 and the State Trooper Office out of Mobile Post. And then I ask Commissioner Gruber to do the pledge of allegiance. But, Mr. Bill, would you like to come up and do the invocation? Please rise.
I'm sorry. Put away.
Let us join our hearts together in prayer. Almighty and eternal God, we come to you today humbly as we know how, because we realize in a meeting such as this above our heads are those words, "In God we trust." Each and every day you give to us is a gift. What we do with that day and how we live for you and make the choices in our life is the gift that we give back to you, reflective of your presence, reflective of your power, reflective of your purpose. We lift up our commissioners today, Father, and the responsibility that they have. Give them wisdom, give them knowledge, give them understanding, that as we, as a people of Baldwin County, who have placed our faith and our trust in them, that they will execute their responsibilities with courage, with strength, with an understanding that Baldwin County is the greatest place in the world to live. Many of us have lived here all of our life. Others have come to enjoy the blessings of this great county, its beaches, its water, and everything that it has to afford. And so, Father, we're thankful for this privilege that is ours. Continue to guide and bless and direct us in all things, that we might be found honorable unto you, for we ask this in the powerful, strong name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gruber. Thank you, Mr. Bill. You're more than welcome to stay, or you can go, whatever you want to do. Commissioners, we got the adoption of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 7, 2025, regular meeting.
And I'll second it.
All right, got a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next thing is the financial administration division, payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we pay the bills for Baldwin County.
And I'll second it.
All right, got a motion in a second to pay our bills. Like Commissioner Underwood always says, a good thing to pay our bills. I had to do that, sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none, says all passes. Sorry, y'all, I'm pulling up my socks. I can't stand wearing socks without going in my boots.
Hey, and I'm impressed you listen to me sometimes.
I listen to you. All right, and then we got BA2, this is a notification of interim payments approved by the Clerk Treasury as allowed under policy 8.1, no action needed. On the consent, I want to make a note that CS2 has been pulled from the agenda. Just want to let y'all be aware of that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve our consent agenda as discussed in the work session, noting that CS2 is not on the consent agenda, it's been pulled.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Select that motion.
All right, I got a motion in a second, and that's to remove, make sure we note that CS2 had been pulled. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, unanimous. Let's see, got the consent. All right, well, next thing is the presentations. Let me, before I get started on the presentations in the public hearing, if, and I'll make it short, just be mindful of us, and we will respect y'all as well when you come up and talk. Don't cut up here and criticize any one of the county commissioners, be respectful. But we will give you time to speak. We've had that in the past, and as chairman, I'm not going to let that happen. But I will listen to you, and just don't criticize us. So I understand, and I do respect y'all's time to speak, so. Ma'am, it's your floor. You have the floor.
All right. This is zoning request, Z24-47, Randall property. The applicant is asking to rezone 31.7 acres located in Planning District 37. The property is located at the northeast corner of State Highway 104 in St. Michael's Way. The subject property is currently vacant. It is owned B C Z, based community zoning, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to B2 and also RSF2. Here you can see the locator map and the site map. You see the subject property is B C Z. To the north and south is B C Z zoning. To the west is R A, rural agricultural. And a little further to the east is RV2, which is a motor coach park. Here is what the applicant is proposing to rezone, the front 10 acres, that front 104 to B2, and then the 21.79 acres to the north as RSF2. They have met all the factors except for adverse effect to traffic, without knowing exactly what is going to be put on the property is questionable. It does meet the flu map. The subject property is one mile east of the intersection of 181 and 104, which is one of the major activity nodes for District 37. The local provisions state that the higher intensity commercials such as B3 or greater and then the residential zoning of RSF3 or greater shall be clustered at this major activity node to reduce the spread of traffic and congestion throughout the district and lessen the burden of the commercial development and higher intensity residential development on infrastructure. We believe this requested B2 and RSF2 is a good transition from this major activity node, and staff believes this is a logical expansion to the adjacent zoning and land uses. Staff recommended approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval for the two.
All right, any commissioners, any questions for Saad?
I was trying to refresh my memory on what all is available, allowable by right in B2. Is a dog kennel allowed in B2? I was looking for it, that's why I was looking at you.
Right. I don't have it in front of me, I don't believe so. B2 is usually your smaller, like dollar generals, or like doctor's offices, which are allowed in B1, so anything in B1 and B2. And B2 is categorized as your neighborhood business, so something that would fall under the neighborhood business.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gruber, you got anything?
No, not on my hands.
All right. I'll open up the public hearing. I've got several people signed up to speak on this case. The first one I've got is Joseph Thedford. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Just please state your name and who you represent. You look like an attorney, so you must.
Yes, sir. My name's Joe Thedford. I'm a lawyer with Chason &amp; Chason. I represent Robert Randall, he's the applicant here. Robert bought this property unzoned. He owned it at the time that District 37 came in to zoning. I recall from that time, there was a fair amount of talk about, because about, a large part of the district was zoned community preservation or rural agricultural, and there was a lot of talk about how we're going to have to rezone as growth continues, and most of the more intense zoning was around the commercial nodes. And so, since that time, there's been continued growth, and this property is one mile from the 181, 104 commercial node. And so, it came in as community preservation, and we respectfully believe that our proposed zoning of B2 for the 104 fronting 10 acres and RSF2 for the 20 acres behind that to the north is more appropriate than community preservation zoning. I've got three points that I wanted to make, and I'll do it quick with my minute and a half. One, it's consistent with the flu. This is, the flu says this is appropriate for bid density development potential, which includes B2, and RSF2 is actually less dense than what would be appropriate for bid density development under ordinary circumstances. I think practically, you know, RSF2 is the same zoning as the neighborhood that's diagonally across the street from 104. It's only one mile from that major activity node at 181 and 104. It's next to an RV park, and so while it is development, it is consistent with a growth pattern that's logical for this area. And the other point I wanted to make is this is consistent with the local provisions in District 31 that prohibit certain more intense use, such as higher density residential, no multifamily, high-density residential, and this compiles with all of those local provisions for District 37. The last thing that I'll just, I'm anticipating some talk about traffic and drainage, and I would respectfully submit that those are more appropriately addressed at the next stage of development. So, you know, when an actual development plan is there, when there's subdivision requests, and right now there are no specific plans for development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Little? I forgot to tell you at the beginning, you got three minutes, and if you're representing a group, you got five minutes, so I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and proceed. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Gary Little, and I live in the Verandas subdivision. My wife and I moved here in October of 2020 after retiring from the active duty service of 36 years in the United States Air Force. I'd like to offer several reasons why the commission should reject the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone the 30-plus acres adjacent to our homes and the other 117 property owners of the Verandas and the estates. This commission has previously rejected rezoning this property to accommodate a 245-unit apartment complex. That was a great decision. Afterwards, the property owner, Mr. Randall, hired an attorney to sue the commission and the county. Now, Mr. Randall and his attorney have proposed another attempt to have the property rezoned to allow businesses on Highway 104, and he simply wants to make a profit from his investment. What about the 117 property owners who invested in buying homes in the Verandas, the estates, and those who live on Lawrence Road? Are you concerned about their investment? They represent over $157 million of investment, and they represent over 200 voters and a large property tax base. Here are my concerns: Traffic at the intersection of Lawrence Road, St. Michael's Way, and 104 is very problematic. 104 is a two-lane road, has only a short turning lane east going up to St. Michael's Way, and then from St. Michael's Way on to 104, there's only one very short turning lane. We have seen and heard many accidents at this location, and the congestion is there in the morning and the afternoon. It seems like adding more businesses to this area would be, continue to inflame the problem rather than help. When I moved here in 2020, there was only one business at the intersection of 104 and 181. That was just four short years ago. Now, we have Three Circle Church, we have a Publix, we have a Wawa, we have a 30-acre development called The Encounter that's across the street from Three Circle. We have apartment complexes just to the north and 181, and then we have business areas ready for development and growth. Each of those businesses on the right of 181 as you head north, and those across the street from Three Circle are developed and ready for businesses, but it sit vacant. There's nobody building any businesses in that area. So there's really not a demonstrated need to expand businesses to the east going down 104. If you head down east on 104 from the Verandas toward Silver Hill, the next business is nearly four miles away. That's the Alley Cat Alley. That's a small bar and restaurant. 104, due to its size, a two-lane highway, does not need to become a business thoroughfare. We understand the need for growth in Baldwin County. People are moving here because they like the pace of life, the rural settings, and the friendly people. Today, you have an opportunity to extend that delicate balance. I'm asking you to reject the rezoning request, keep the businesses off of 104, and keep it zoned for single-family only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. All right, Mr. Ben.
Cool.
Cool?
Yep.
Thank you. You got three minutes or five minutes? Which one do you, are you speaking for on behalf of a group?
Three minutes is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you.
Don't start three minutes yet.
I'm hitting the button.
Go back.
Go back?
Okay.
Oh, it's tiny. Can you make it bigger?
Don't start three minutes.
Oh, you are. He's got the control. Yeah, he is the computer guy. There we go. There we go. He's the expert. All right, so what we have here is that's the Verandas Estates, that's RSFE, and then just to the northeast there is RSF2. So, the property that is being looked at is up in the far corner there, up in the northeast corner of that screen. So we're basically, if this goes through, we're going from cows to crowds, right? And that's what's going to happen. We really don't want that. I think this is a much better view, that's St. Michael's High School back there in the background, during school going, people going to school and going away from school. That's extremely crowded at that intersection there. Well, I'm hitting it. It's not advancing. There you go. Okay, I have one question here, is I looked at the documents online, and all the documents mention Planning District 15 on all the official documents, but this is in Planning District 37. So I'm just wondering, why do the documents mention Planning District, that it's in Planning District 15? I'm just curious. How and why did it go from 37 to 15? We'll wait after your three minutes, and if you want to, then we can get one of our staff to answer that for you. Great, because I mean, that's the Planning District 15 map, and it says 37 right there, and that's the property right there. So, all the maps, the Planning District, whoop, the Planning District 37 map and the Planning District 15 map both show that it's in 37 and not 15. So I'm just curious how 15 popped up. And anyway, this is what I want to look at here, is you can see that circle there, and that's where, you know, the planned business was, and then somebody got an orange crayon and kind of extended beyond that little circle there. And I just want to remind everybody that that little orange area there is not, this is not a regulatory document. These are, it's a reference tool. So it doesn't have to be zoned B2. Somebody did get their orange crayon out and said, "Well, maybe this could be B2." It's not a law, it's not regulation, it's a suggestion. But we suggest that it's not, we suggest that orange crayon get taken off, all right? Also, we're jumping from rural, again, cows to crowds, right? From rural to B2, does B2 include apartments? No?
No.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. So there's no high-density residential there?
No, that's a residential zoning class.
Okay. So B2 is really small businesses?
There's a whole, I've just been looking it up.
Yeah, okay. But there's no high-density residential?
No residential in business.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, time's up, and I would like that question answered.
Yeah, I can get, Jay.
How did it jump to 15?
Jay, can you answer that question he asked about the district? Do you remember?
Yes, sir, I believe it's just a typo on the map. Yeah, because it's in 37, all the review was done by the District 37 regulations. But to clarify real quick, allowable uses, I know there's a lot of questions about that in B2. So B2 is one of our neighborhood business districts, so it's one of the lower-intensity districts. So most of the uses that are permitted by right are fall under the local commercial uses category, which is neighborhood convention store, I'm going to read a couple of, you know, shoe store, sign shop, sporting goods store, tailor shop. Commissioner Underwood, you asked about animal kennels. They are allowed as a commissioned site plan, which is basically a conditional use permit.
Yeah, I've been avidly looking that up, so I've got, if you're answering it for me, I've got my.
Well, I'm just clarifying for the record, yeah.
Thank you, though, I appreciate it.
It is allowed, there's several of the general commercial uses. They're not allowed, like, by right, you know, you have to come through a special approval and site plan approval process to get some of those things. But you're also correct, this is a, the B2 is a business, neighborhood business district, it doesn't allow multifamily or anything like that, it would be simply a neighborhood business district.
Would you say, though, that in a sensitive area where there is lots of residential and there's not other commercial, that it would be advantageous to either know what type of business was planned or to maybe have a PRD that is, that sets in stone what it's going to be versus just a blanket, any B?
And that's always an option. We do have that PRD and plan, you know, community section in our ordinance that allows, you know, when you have a mixed-use development, that to kind of tie down a more firm master plan of what we would expect to see there. But that's not what's applied for today, today's.
I understand.
A straight zone.
Well, I know this is still the public hearing process, do we have any more persons signed up?
Did you have any more questions for me for now?
I will ask you when.
I'm going to close them. You finished, Jay?
When the public hearing's closed, I will ask you a question.
Has anybody that did not sign up for ES1 that wants to speak? All right, all right, I'll close the public hearing on ES1.
Okay, I do have a question. So, it's B C Z now. I'm reading on page 83 of the zoning ordinance, trying to get a grasp on that. That's still one that is interesting, I'll use the word. What could they do with it now?
Well, as we've talked about a lot in the past, B C Z is a challenging zone to understand. It's not a typical zoning district. In essence, they can continue to use it at its current use, you know.
That's really what B C Z is.
It's kind of, the best way to explain it is it's almost like a temporary placeholder zone until the property owner decides what they want to do with it, right? In this area, especially District 37 as a whole, there's a lot of B C Z in that district.
Yeah, as noted.
So it's basically, you know, you could do three-acre residential lots, so you could, basically you can go by the RSFE standards if you want to do residential. You can continue to use your agricultural use without having to get, you know, building permits and these different, not building permits, site plan permits and things that normally zone properties have. So there's a lot of flexibility, it's kind of.
Okay, I'm good. I've had questions about it in the past, I still have questions about it, and I don't think we're going to solve that today, but I just was curious. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I just have a lot of questions about the, this particular case, the fact that it has, as I mentioned earlier, when you have a zoning classification in an area that I see as sensitive, and I am well aware of what a document that is labeled a guide is, and also well aware that rezonings can or can, do not have to take place, and I know that those can be litigated and all those kind of things, but I think for right now with the unknown questions, I just would like to recommend that the commission table this particular case until the February 18 meeting. The public hearing has been held, but I just think that it would be a good idea to table this.
Okay. So that's your motion to just table?
It's a motion.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to table it until February the 18th here in Fairhope.
And I'll select that motion.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Well, we have a motion to table it till February the 18th here in Fairhope.
And I'll second that motion.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So right now, it was tabled till the February 18 meeting. All right. ES2 case.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a rezone as well as a PRD. They're separate cases, but I have one presentation, and you guys can vote on this at the end, either separately or together. So this is case Z2449, the Johnson property, as well as PRD 2407, Bear Creek. This is a rezone request as well as a planned residential development for a 247-site residential development. The subject property is located east of Highway 83 and north of Kickler Circle, and south of Gruber's Lane, near the town of Alberta. The current zoning of the property is RA, Rural Agriculture, and the requested zoning is RSF1, Single Family Residential. The density is 2.2 lots per acre. The amount of open space that's proposed is approximately 45 acres. Thirty-eight of this is usable open space. Here's the subject property within the county. On the screen is the locator map as well as the site map. The adjacent zonings to the north, east, and west include RA, Rural Agriculture. And then we have the adjacent parcel to the south, zoned RSF2, Residential Single Family District. And the majority of the land uses are residential, with the parcel to the east being vacant. These are the factors that staff reviews during any rezone request. Staff believes all the factors have been met, other than factor number five. This would include a traffic study. This is not required during the PRD process, but when the applicant does apply for preliminary plat approval, a traffic study will be required. I'm gonna jump over the staff analysis, but I'm happy to go back and answer any questions you may have regarding this analysis. Here is...
What's your lot size, average lot size in this PRD? These numbers are really blurred on here. I can't really read it.
There are 60-foot lots?
I want to know, I want to know how many square feet.
About 8,000 something.
Like 62 by 130 or something like that. I can't really...
The typical lot dimensions shown here, 62 by 135.
Okay.
So here is the sketch plan that's proposed. This includes the adjacent parcel to the south, which was recently rezoned to RSF2 in September of last year. And here is the site plan, as well as the landscaping plan. We see 40-foot buffers adjacent to residential, as well as 20-foot buffers according to the regulations of a PRD. And then we have 10-foot buffers along classified roads.
Okay.
In terms of the rezoning, staff recommends the request to be approved. The Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial from 4 to 2. With the PRD, staff is recommending approval of the request with the conditions outlined on the screen. This PRD does include the adjacent property to the south. This was a PRD in September of last year, which was approved. So if this case is approved, it would render the other case null and void. And the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial with a vote of 6 to 0. And I'll answer any questions you guys may have.
I guess the question that I have is the, from rural agriculture to RSF1 for the rezoning part, that's 2.20 lots per acre, that would, I think it's...
30,000 square foot lots. 30,000 square foot lots.
All right.
And the average lot size in here is between an RSF4 and an RSF3, so really necessarily, it's not 7,500. I mean, I can't read all those numbers on there because they're blurred. They're blurred. It's not my eyesight. They're blurred.
All right, well, thank you.
I would appreciate if those were not blurred in the future, even if we have to have them on separate pages. That would help. But that's all.
That's it. I don't have any. Commissioner Gubber, you got any questions?
No.
Yes, sir. All right, I'll open up the public hearing on this case. I've got a, Dwayne Smith. Mr. Smith, you got three minutes or five minutes if you're speaking on a group?
Good morning, Dwayne Smith, anchor engineering, representing the developer. Wanted to go over, I think, to me, and there's been some feedback post-planning commission, I think the rezoning from RA to RSF1 is kind of an easier step. I think there were some planning commissioner members that got confused at the planning commission, and maybe they intended to vote for it, yes. But whatever, a lot of things happen at planning commission to kind of get some confusion going. But what I wanted to go over with you is, we, show you a few items. This is gonna be hard to do. Stay on mic, too. This is the PRD that's already been approved to the south.
Right.
And all, so that's what's currently approved and could be built today. And then what we're proposing to do is spread out the lots, add lots of green space, lots of amenities, basically build it in pods around large green spaces. The detention ponds here are actually, is intended to grow and be bigger and be wet ponds. And we would actually stock those with fish as an amenity for the residents also, instead of just a standard dry pond and everything. So it'll be a heavily amenitized development. And then there's a lot of conversation about, we want a PRD to be different than a standard subdivision. So we put together a layout of what a standard subdivision would be based on new sub-racks. This is pretty much what you end up with. And to us, I think it's pretty evident, this is way better than this.
That's not the same property, is it?
Yes.
Well, you got it flipped around.
Turn it, yeah, there you go.
My apologies.
That's all right.
Okay, so is that both pieces of property put together?
Yes.
So you're saying that if it was RSF2 on the previous one and RSF1 on that one, that's your standard?
This is a standard subdivision.
How many lots is in that? And what's your average?
Same number of lots.
But you have to have 30,000 square foot lots, unless you do a PRD.
Correct.
Because you were saying standard subdivision, so what's your square foot of lots on your one you're holding?
These are showing the same-sized lots on both ones. The same, same, they're the same size.
So how can you show the same-sized lots on a standard subdivision when you're asking for RSF1? Tell me.
My apologies. I was not trying to create confusion.
Well, you're messing with the wrong people if you think you're gonna show that, because that's not the same math.
Okay.
Sorry, me. I'm not gonna speak for them.
All right, my apologies. I'm not trying to show confusion.
Well, then tell me what you just showed me.
Well, basically, all we were trying to do was show the same number of lots, same-sized lots, with the green space and amenities that are required per the new sub-rack.
But you can't do that with RSF1.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking.
The lots are bigger. Understood. And you get less lots. Yeah, we could, that, it could have been modified, but too late for that now, to show that. But at the end of the day, we think what we're proposing is really good. We prevent any wetland disturbance, which the old PRD does have some wetland disturbance. We think the flow of the neighborhood is much improved. We think the potting around large green spaces provides something that the typical subdivision doesn't get, regardless of the size lot. So, you know, we're trying to show that we're, you know, we're not trying to maximize how many physical lots we can fit in a subdivision. We're trying to create the pot effect around green spaces with amenities, so that all the residents have a local green space with amenities to go to.
It really connects these two pieces of land better, because, you know, if we have to go forward with this one, at some point in the future, you're gonna have a stubout road. And so then you're gonna have a stubout road going to the northern parcel, and then you're gonna have these two entrances along with this entrance here. So the PRD just allows the two pieces of property to flow better together, as opposed to doing this right now, and then coming back in the future and having to put a stubout road through here, and you're just gonna have less connectivity.
Well, thank you. Time's up. I gave you some more time because we were talking to you, so...
Right.
But thank you all.
Thank you.
Is that Ms. Doyle? Same for you, ma'am. You got three minutes or five, whatever, if you're speaking on...
Three minutes is fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so obviously, the map must have changed from what I have on the website, because it looks like they relaid it out. Now there's a pond in the middle, and what I had, there's not that. And this was printed off today.
Do you mind if I ask you, are you a resident that there is opposed to it, or are you for it?
I'm opposed, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
I'm opposed. But anyway, so I'm curious to how now there's a pond in the middle. Whenever, there was these retention ponds on the side, they said. I get, you know, they're saying they're gonna make the wetlands better. That is their main goal. I don't understand how putting these houses, where they're gonna put them on the backside, is gonna make it better. I've lived there my whole life. My family has farmed it. I can go into depth about it and how wet it is. Come look at it right now. I mean, we're sinking. So then putting this in there, I just want to know, how is the drainage gonna happen? Okay, so we're gonna drain it all to the middle? That's great. I'm happy for that. I don't want it to backflow into my property, because I'm already having that issue, but we just have cows and stuff now. So whatever, it is what it is. I'm fine with that. This land is very hilly. So they're gonna have to come in, they're gonna have to do some site work. So once they do that site work, the land to the south of that, it's gonna flood. My land to the north, it's gonna flood. There's a creek, but I think the county said it's not actually a creek, which is understandable. It's small. I mean, I don't want it to be a creek, but whatever. Anyways, it's gonna flood us. I just, I'm confused now, because like, I have one that was printed off this morning, and they have another one. Just take it in consideration that how many houses that they're gonna stack in here, I don't think is gonna be feasible for the land, because they're really gonna have to do a lot of work to make this flat, because it's not flat. It's hilly. So they're gonna have to bring dirt in, they're gonna have to lay the land out, they're gonna have to flatten it. There's a lot of ditches right now, because that's natural erosion, so it's flowing how it needs to. What are they gonna do about that? I mean, I know they've come out, they put stakes out, they've checked the wetlands. I get that, but they haven't really done an in-depth wetland check, I don't feel like. But that's just my concern. I mean, it is what it is. At the end of the day, can't stop it. But I just want it to not affect me and my family, because we plan on being here, you know? And it's our land just as well as theirs. It just makes me nervous with this many homes coming in. It's gonna change our way of life. So... But I was just curious, I mean, like, that's way different than what I have. So, and it was printed off this morning.
Can I see what you got?
Yes, ma'am.
That one, the colored page?
That was printed off this morning.
What I'm showing here doesn't look like that.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, and I printed that off this morning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gamble?
Yes, thank you. My name's Tracy Gamble, 32054 Bartel Street, Alberta, Alabama. Three minutes is what I need today. Thank you. I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. And I've got sort of two components to this, which are neither as an adjacent property owner or anything like that. It's just my observations regarding the underlying density must be being met for RSF1. Therefore, I don't quite understand the composite density in combining these two properties that is being requested, which is supposedly for the one case, RSF1, RSF2 already being, having been approved. So 2.2 units per acre is less than what is allowed by RSF2 zoning, and therefore still compliant is what the presentation by planning and zoning has stated. If we are now going to begin composite densities, then what is the map going to show? RSF1, 2, or something else? My proposal for an in-between density of 1.5, two homes per acre, last December, year ago, was not accepted by this commission. Now you are asked to approve something that is, has no underlying density designation. I see this as a slippery slope for requesting a designated density and then upping it closer to the next larger density designation. I propose more specific categories be established to avoid this type of confusion and misleading designation. There is no category for 2.2 homes per acre, and that is more than RSF1, which is the request on 61731. Regarding a bigger picture here, and that's why I have, oops, slide 3, wrong one. Well, I don't know where it is. Anyway, it's the larger map with showing where the subject property is located. That one with the yellow, no, no, that's okay. Maybe it wasn't 3. Yes, on this map, you can see where the subject property is, as well as, I don't know how they say that, Kickler Circle, and then a little further north, Seabert Road. To the left of Seabert Road is the new Alberta Middle School, which is currently in progress, being built. So how, a little further north, how will you determine what the appropriate residential single-family category will be for adjacent properties surrounding the school if you use the same logic here, which is to reduce density going north from the current activity node in Alberta? Would you evaluate and consider creating a new activity node surrounding the school property? There is currently acreage directly across from the school that is in negotiations for RSF2, but the Planning and Zoning Department has told them, unless I am corrected, that RSF1 would be the highest density that would be approved there. I would venture to say that some commercial will be desirable there as well. Commissioner Gubber mentioned the possibility of needing to reevaluate the current master plan, and this is a good example of why that might be necessary as time goes on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. All right. Does anybody wants to talk about this case that came in late or hadn't signed up? All right, nobody? Close the public hearing?
Question on RSF1, which you're asking for, is, that's 2.2 lots per acre under RSF1?
RSF1 would be 1.45 units per acre.
1.5, okay.
Not even one and a half.
That's okay.
It's 30,000 square foot minimum lot size. That's 30,000 square foot, and what's a acre, 43 something?
43,560.
43,560.
It's approximately a 3/4 acre lot, I mean, that's...
About 3/4, okay. All right. And that's what they're asking for, that. Okay. RSF1.
This application is disturbing to me. The RSF1 is not a disturbing request, but this planned residential development is not what...
It's designed to be.
They're designed to be. This is an undermining of the whole intent to, look, born and raised here, I want to preserve and protect and promote the quality of life that we expect here in Baldwin County. This does not do that. This is trying to get every little inch that you can get off of, obviously, I've not been out there and looked at the property, I've not walked the property... not walked the property. You can't sometimes tell from the road where all the wetlands and the drainage and all this kind of stuff is, you know? And sometimes I hear the, I guess, the, what would be the, I'm trying to think of the right word to say, but what would make this better, sometimes a PRD might make this better, instead of just your cookie cutter subdivision that you've put in here with no kind of green space. I have long been an advocate for quality developments, and I think you can achieve that with a PRD if it is done with some type of intention and not some type of agenda. And I feel like there's an agenda with undermining our subdivision regulations by doing this. You are not going to convince me that just throwing this stuff out there and transitioning it from this to that one, you know, I was, I thought the other one was okay, but now that I see what's being done, you're going to add another parcel to it. Adding, I mean, RSF1 sounds okay, but this PRD, in my opinion, is just an example of how we will erode the quality of life in Baldwin County, rather than promote the quality of life in Baldwin County. You know, putting these, these green spaces behind a home, and it's got lots of wetlands behind there, that's very hard to maintain. You know, having a drainage ditch or detention, retention pond behind a wooden fence and stuff like that, who's going to go and, you know, take care of that kind of stuff? This is not. I heard that there was, there was some talk at the planning commission meeting. I did not go back and watch what was said at that particular point about this, but anybody that's been in this long enough, I have sat on planning and zoning boards myself for 22 years. I've now been in this position for six years. That is, half of my life I have spent looking at things like this, and this just keeps getting worse and worse. And so bring us something that looks good and is going to improve the quality of life. I have, this is a horrible design, and if that is the best you can do, then I don't get it. I feel like that you're just, just trying to, 8,000 something square feet lot in there, and all your green space looks like just a bunch of ditches? I don't get it. So I don't know, I mean, are we going to vote on these separately?
Yes, you have the option to vote on them separately.
So this one's for the PRD?
No, this is for the zoning, right?
This is for the zoning.
First one's for the zoning.
Correct.
And then the PRD.
Okay.
Case number Z2449 is for the rezoning to the RSF1.
All right. Seems like we talked more about the PRD than we did the zoning personally, but I guess we're at a point where you want a motion?
One of y'all, I need a motion from one of y'all.
If this is a motion to approve the RSF1, I will make a motion, we approve RSF1.
I have a motion to approve the rezoning from rural agriculture, is it rural agriculture, correct, to RSF1?
That's correct.
All right. To approve it to RSF1.
Well, I'll second, I'll second that specific RSF1.
That's correct.
Be for sure.
I know, we want to make sure. So we got that correct. All right, so I have a motion to approve to RSF1, and I have a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. All right, that passed for the rezoning. All right, the next case is ES3, case number PRD. This is the PRD, so this is where I need a motion, whatever y'all decide. I can't make that motion.
I will make a motion to deny the PRD.
All right, I have a motion to deny.
And I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion and a second for denial. Any further discussion?
I think I said enough.
Yeah, I wasn't going to add nothing to it. You did it.
Well, the thing that gets me is, you know, the PRD, you know, we're looking at RSF1. And when you put this PRD together, you don't end up with RSF1. You end up with RSF3 or 4 almost, or a 60-foot lot. And just about every lot in that plat that was shown is 60-foot wide. You know, that doesn't get, you know, the PRD, that's not what PRDs were designed to do. They were designed to help make some, a little bit adjustments for some mixed use, but there's nothing mixed in this at all. It's all one straight, one thing, and that's it. There's nothing else there. So, you know, that's, that's why, you know, I just, I just, I just, it's not following our PRD what it was intended to do in the beginning. So.
I wasn't going to say anything, but after what his comment is, I want to echo what he is saying, is that the PRD was supposed to bring about, you know, you give up a little bit of density to have some green space and some, a better thing. This is not meant to just undermine the zoning classifications, and I feel like that that is what has been happening lately, and that is, that is why I don't feel like this is, this is the quality that we deserve to put on our citizens in Baldwin County.
Okay. Well, I have a motion and a second for denial. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it passed. All right, we'll go to other staff recommendations. Anything? Nothing? Roger, thank you. Public comments? Anybody that wants to speak about anything? You got three minutes? Nothing? Nobody wants to speak? You have three minutes, Ms. Gamble.
I just want to say thank you for saying what you said, because I totally agree with you and appreciate you looking out for the quality of life in Baldwin County, and I think you do deserve better than what was shown today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Press questions? Any, any press? Nobody's here for the press? All right, Commissioner comments?
I'll start out. I want to thank our staff, you know, for getting us where we're at today with this meeting. And also, we had to postpone this meeting because of the snow that we had, which was another thing that, you know, everybody wasn't used to that around here. I mean, that set a record, you know, of amount of snowfall we had, you know, at eight to nine inches or 10 inches of snow in Baldwin County is unheard of. And, you know, it kind of set things back, you know. We had to close offices because people couldn't get around. And our highway department, I want to thank them and all the folks that helped, EMA, and everyone else that helped with this, trying to make sure that everybody was safe. And, you know, I mean, the highway department worked very hard, because people, they know that people are going to still get out in it. They had to place some, you know, some sand on several critical areas that we had. And I think they did a fantastic job. I know we're going to probably have a lessons learned, especially because of this being the historical event that it was. But, you know, they did a fantastic job. And again, thank you for all y'all have done to make the citizens safe in Baldwin County. Thank you.
Commissioner Underwood?
Oh, I know.
I know you're long-winded.
I know I am, and you are too sometimes, but anyhow, you told me I could talk. I just want to say that last week was amazing. I think that just, I never, ever, and I know everybody said this over and over again, that this, never seen this. If you're alive today and lived here your whole life, you've never seen this. Nobody has, I guess, because it was record-breaking. So even back in those 1800s and something, they didn't see this much. But it was absolutely beautiful, and it was almost, it was so peaceful, and it was almost like all that snow out there insulated in the sound. And I just want to commend our highway department. I want to commend our EMA and Frank and our administrator and everyone that was involved in making the, helping us make the decisions and helping Commissioner McKenzie with his decisions, because you don't always know what to do. But I think that you guys made the right decision, and whenever you made the decision that said our roads were impassable, you drive on them at your own risk. I didn't leave my house from Monday night until Friday morning, and trust me, it was tough. Not, I didn't, I left, I didn't leave my property. Okay, I did leave my house. I played in the snow. That was so fun. Never, ever thought I would like that, and if I want to do it again, I'm going to travel somewhere. I'm not going to wait on it to happen here. But I've never had an opportunity to do that because of my personal work schedule. In the fall, I'm busy on the farm, and in the winter and early spring, I'm busy at the CPA office. And so my entire life is a pretty much, not the true epitome of a workaholic, but someone that works all the time. I've never had an opportunity to take a vacation, to go in the snow, where I felt like I had enough time to enjoy it. And now I'm so old, I don't want to go out there and ski or none of that kind of stuff, because I'm a, I'm an anti, like, you know, I'm like, you know, don't do stupid stuff person. But it was so much fun out there in the orchard and having fun and watching everybody's pictures. And my nephew came over and did a drone picture of all the property, and that was so cool. I know Matt got him a drone. Did you figure out how to use it? And y'all made the right decision, in my opinion. We did not have the equipment. I don't feel like we should invest millions and millions of dollars for something that may never, ever happen again. And the people who made the decisions to get out on the road, and for those employers that made people come in that didn't have to come in, I know there's certain emergency types, maybe medical workers and our safe, public safety people who have to, but for people that were just out, what we used to call rubbernecking and looking, you caused a lot of problems that didn't have to happen, and I didn't want to contribute to that. So I thank y'all for making that decision, and if y'all receive any criticism from anybody, you have to be like when we were elected, we had people say stuff about us all the time, and you have to just do the right thing, and I think you did the right thing. So thank y'all.
I just want to echo, though, what they said. I mean, Frank, Roger, Mark, you and your highway team did an excellent job. Thank you for being out there. Tom with EMA, thank you, and helping me make that decision to close. It was, thank y'all for helping me with that. During the time from May, excuse me, from Monday through Friday, there were 42 crashes in Baldwin County. And that's not talking about the cities, because they have crashes, and I didn't get the numbers. But that's 42 crashes in five days. That tells me that people didn't stay home when they should have been home. And it puts risk, when they, when you don't stay home, it puts our first responders at risk. And I just want to say thank you to our sheriff's office, to the sheriff, to the deputies that all came together to work, and to our LEA partners. Thank y'all for being out there and protecting Baldwin County citizens. I-10 was hectic. That was the worst part of, I think, in Baldwin County was I-10. And there were some citizens that reached out to me and say, why don't y'all have salt? And why don't you have these plow trucks and all this? And I reached out to Frank, our county engineer, and he told me, he said, you know, we can't store salt. You can't just let it sit there, and that's a lot of money. And this is a historical thing that happened, and, but I'm very thankful for our employees that got out there and worked hard and put out the sand on the bridges, because that sand was a blessing. So thank you, Frank, Mark, and your team, your highway department. And Roger, thank you, too, for your help. I really appreciate it. And thank you, commissioners, for making the chairman the sole responsible when it comes to closing, because I know that I did reach out to some of y'all, but I didn't want to bug y'all all the time and, you know, get y'all's opinions. So thank y'all for, you know, but y'all know as well as anybody to always call me if you've got questions. So thank y'all for that. But other than that, that's all I have. So thank y'all. Thank you for the citizens that came and spoke today.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn. We adjourn.